Is the plenary hall exit plan. For guests situated at the rostrum, the nearest exits are at the north and south rostrum. For occupants at the first floor and front rows of the VIP gallery, the north, south, and main entrance exits are available. For occupants at the VIP gallery, the main entrance and north and south VIP exits are available. For occupants at the second floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third floor gallery, there are available exits at the east and west sides. In case of emergency, this is the plenary hall exit plan. For guests situated at the rostrum, the nearest exits are at the north and south rostrum. For occupants at the first floor and front rows of the VIP gallery, the north, south, and main entrance exits are available. For occupants at the VIP gallery, the main entrance and north and south VIP exits are available. For occupants at the second floor gallery, there are exits available at both sides. For occupants at the third floor gallery, there are available exits at the east and west sides.
I don't want to talk about that. The most important thing is to make sure that we're not talking about the same things that we're doing. I don't want to talk about the same things that we're doing.
The session is called to order. May we all rise for the singing of the national anthem? Bayang magiliw, peras ang silang anan. Alang ng puso sa titik moy buhay. Lupang hinirang, duya ka ng magiting. Sa manlulupi, ti ka pasisilil. Sa lalat at puntok, sa simoy at sa langitong pagkaw. Kayilang ang kula at awit sa paglayang nila mahal. Ang isap ng wata at moy ng gumpay na rapihikin. Ang pituwing na paraw niya kaylan, mapay ng magilingin. Lupan ang maraw ng war, aming pagsikta. Uyay lami sa titik ko. Aming ligaya dapat may mahapin. At mahatay ng tali ng sayo. Please remain standing as we silently pray collectively for our country and for the world, and also for those who are devastated in the calamities that are happening in the south. Please take your seats. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members. Honorable representatives: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Acharon, Asidre, Ako, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansha, Asistio, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Bascub, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondo, Bungalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Muhain, Bulut Megtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayonuy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tungalau, Coangelika Natasha, Coelizaldi, Copilar, Kohuangco Jaime Eduardo Mark, Kohuangco Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalo, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Vanessa, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Di Maporo Muhammad Kalin, Di Maporo Siti Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhalley, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Udella, Farías, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Gallegos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Gin tu, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga Ara, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Conghun, Labadlabad, Lakson, Laksonuwell, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sani, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaytong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Maniquis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisa, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Padiernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Penya, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Recto, Rihensia, Remulia, Revilia Brian, Revilia Ramondjolo, Reyes, Rilyo, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Iolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamarie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulug, Silverio, Singzon Richel, Singzon Ronald, Singzon Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maica, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Huatco, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez, Tiango, Tieng, Tolentino, Tulfo Erwin, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umalie, Unabya, Ungab, Uy, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Verzosa, Vilia, Viliaferte Luis Raymond, Viliaferte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villarazas Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Chrishantel, Yap Christoferson, Yap Edvik, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows the 226 members responded to the call.
With 226 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we proceed with the reference of business, and with this we request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of the bills and resolutions, as well as communications and committee reports. Sumo, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of the bills and resolutions on first reading, as well as the other communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business: Resolutions. House Resolution 1479, directing the appropriate House Committee to conduct an inquiry on the violence, harassment, intimidation, and other criminal acts committed before, during, and after the conduct of the 2023 barangay NSK elections by Representative Suarez.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1480, expressing the profound condolences of the House on the passing of Mr. Tediko by Representatives De Vanessa, Alonte, Rodriguez Rufus, Atide, Hernandez, and other members.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1481, directing the Committee on Public Order and Safety to immediately conduct an investigation into the 297,000 excess debts in the Philippines in 2021 based on data from the PSA by Representative Fernandez.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1482, urging the appropriate Philippine government departments and agencies to extend their full cooperation to the Office of the Prosecutor of the ICC with respect to its investigation of any alleged crime within the jurisdiction of the ICC, including but not limited to the crime against humanity of murder committed in the Philippines in the context of the so-called War on Drugs campaign by Representative Lagman.
To the Committee on Justice and Committee on Human Rights.
Communications: Various letters and reports submitted by local government chief executives and officials regarding their fund utilization and status of program project implementation of the local government support fund.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated October 16, 2023 of the COA Regional Director, Regional Office III furnishing the House of Representatives with copies of their financial audit reports and management letters for the year ending December 31, 2022 on certain water districts.
The Committee on Public Accounts.
Letters dated October 24 and 31, 2023 of the DOST Advanced Science and Technology Institute Director submitting to the House copies of certain reports as of September and October 2023.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated October 24, 2023 of the Presidential Advisor on Legislative Affairs and Head, PLO, submitting to the House certain financial accountability reports.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letter dated October 26, 2023 of the DMW Undersecretary, OIC, Office of the Secretary, submitting to the House a copy of their quarterly physical report of operations, bar number one, as of September 30, 2023, which was posted under the transparency seal on their website, www.dmw.gov.ph.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letters dated October 26 and November 7, 2023 of the BSP Bank Officer VI, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services, transmitting to the House duly certified copies of certain BSPs unuses.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Committee Reports: Committee Report Numbers 861, 862, 865, and 866 submitted by the Committees on Public Works and Highways and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 971, 9586, 9589, and 9590 respectively. Committee Report Numbers 863 and 864 submitted by the Special Committee on Forestation and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 9587 and 9588 respectively. Committee Report Numbers 867, 868, and 869 submitted by the Committees on Basic Education and Culture and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 9592, 9593, and 9594 respectively. Committee Report Numbers 868 and 869 submitted by the Committees on Basic Education and Culture and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 9593 and 9594 respectively. Committee Report Numbers 870 and 871 submitted by the Committees on Basic Education and Culture, Youth and Sports Development and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 9601 and 9602 respectively.
To the aforementioned Committee Reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I request that the guests of the Honorable Ronald Singzon of the First District of Ilocosur and Honorable Paulo Ortega of the First District of La Union be acknowledged. His name is Mr. Rogelio Isquivel Jr. He placed eight in the World Surf League Men's Longboard Category.
The guests of Honorable Ronald Singzon and Honorable Paulo Ortega, Mr. Rogelio Isquivel Jr., congratulations in placing eight in the World Surf League Men's, and welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we proceed with the business for the day.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open consideration of House Bill Number 9294 under Committee Report 780, and may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill, HB 9294.
House Bill 9294, an act protecting the rights of all workers, workers, organizations, and unions from interference by their employers, public authorities, or their agents, and providing penalties for violations thereof.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Juan Fidel Nograles to deliver his sponsorship speech.
Congressman Nograles, you are hereby recognized.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker and distinguished colleagues. This proposed legislation was formulated to protect all workers, workers' organizations or unions from interference, intimidation, harassment, attack, or coercion in the exercise of their right to self-organization and association. It is the principle of tripartism and social dialogue that management, labor, and government collaborated to formulate a legislation that will resolve issues of violence and impunity, ensuring from the intervention of security and peacekeeping forces, and to address our country's commitment under ILO Convention 87. On behalf of the Committee on Labor and Employment, I earnestly seek the support and approval of the House of Representatives for this significant piece of legislation. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Arlene Brosas to sponsor also the measure.
Congresswoman Arlene Brosas is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, it is an honor to sponsor in the floor House Bill 9294 or the Anti-Union Interference Bill, which this representation filed and principally authored in response to the growing risks faced by trade unionists and labor organizers in the country in relation to the exercise of the right to organize. Sa ilalim ng saligang batas, malaya dapat na makalahok ng unyon at makapagtayo ng unyon ang mga manggagawa alinsunod sa karapatan nilang mag-organisa. Section 8 under the Bill of Rights states that the right of the people, including those employed in the public and private sectors, to form unions, associations, or societies for purposes not contrary to law, shall not be abridged. Likewise, Section 3, Article 8 states that the state shall guarantee the rights of all workers to self-organization, collective bargaining and negotiations, and peaceful concerted activities, including the right to strike in accordance with law. In a supposed democratic country like the Philippines, unions are supposed to fulfill a very important function of bargaining for better wages and working conditions for workers against the ever escalating assault of capital and neoliberal policies. Unfortunately, unions are increasingly targeted for decimation, with union leaders and members placed in the crosshairs of state-sponsored attacks. Kasabay ng ginagawang pagpaslang sa mga organisador, leader, at miembro ng mga unyon. organisador, leader, at miembro ng mga unyon, nakakabahala rin ang pagnormalisa ng pagbabansag sa mga unionista bilang mga terroristas at kommunistas sa forma ng red tagging at terror tagging. Kaya naman'y tinutulak namin sa Gabriela Women's Party kasama ang iba't ibang mga organisasyon ng mga manggagawa na magkaroon na ng batas na magpaparusas sa mga forma ng pangingialam, harassment, at intimidasyon sa mga manggagawa na nakakasagka sa kanilang pag-uunyon. Under this Anti-Union Interference Bill, we want sanctions to be imposed on those who will commit red tagging, vilification, and profiling of trade union members as well as the conduct of an anti-union seminars, which is being carried out even inside workplace settings. What makes red tagging of workers even more insidious is that these accusations are not necessarily made through official, verifiable channels. Anyone from the security forces, police, or military with or without uniforms in military bases or police stations or in the streets or in workers' homes can tag a trade union leader or organizer as red. This adds to the uncertainty and heightens the fear and at the same time leaves the victim with no administrative or judicial recourse. Nitong nakaraang budget deliberation binanggit natin sa Department of Labor and Employment, doli ang nakakabahalang kaso ng red tagging sa loob mismo ng Phil Foods sa Laguna International Industrial Park. Kung saan ang mga armadong elemento ng AFP at PNP ang nagsasagawa ng anti-union seminar. Inakusaha ang NPA recruiter ang Pedrasion Olalia, ang lantarang pananakot at harassment sa mga manggagawa gaya nito ang gusto nating matigil dahil taliwas ito sa kalayaan at karapatan ng mga manggagawang mag-union. The deliberation and this important pro-worker measure comes in light of the International Labor Organization's high-level tripartite mission in the Philippines last January regarding reported violations of Convention 87 or the Freedom of Association Convention. And rightfully so, the ILO H LTM underscored in its initial findings that very little was done by the government to implement the ILO Committee on Application of Standards since 2009, 2017, and 2019, as indicated by the severe and longstanding cases of extrajudicial killings. The mission also observed that tripartite mechanisms and monitoring bodies such as the MTIP CMB are weak and underfunded, hence the lack of oversight and working mechanisms for address on trade union repression. House Bill 9294 seeks to institutionalize protection of Filipino workers from various forms of interference made by state security forces and even by companies with the end view of enabling the full and unhampered exercise of the right to organize and form unions as provided for under the Constitution. We hope that this August chamber will act favorably on this proposed measure and gather the broadest support for the swift approval of the measure in line with the recommendations made by the International Labor Organization and in line with the longstanding demands of Filipino workers. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of interpretation and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we close the period of interpretation and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend the session for one minute.
Session suspended. Session resumes.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of individual and committee amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual or committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The period of amendments is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 9294.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9294 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9294 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open consideration of House Bill Number 9347 under Committee Report Number 805 and may I request that the Secretary General read the title of the said bill.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 9394, 9347.
House Bill Number 9347, an act providing for the Magna Carta of the out-of-school youth.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Faustino Michael Carlos III to sponsor the measure.
Congressman D from Isabela is hereby recognized.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. The Philippine Statistics Authority in its 2017 annual poverty indicator surveys indicated that about 9% of the estimated 39.2 million Filipinos aged 6 to 24 years old were out-of-school children and youth. According to the most common reasons, among out-of-school children and youth who are not attending school were merely marriages or family matters, which covered 37%, lack of personal interest, 24%, and high cost of education or financial concerns, 17.9%. In November 2021, the research released by the USAID stated that the number of out-of-school youth in the Philippines increased from 16.9% in January 2020 to 25.2% in April 2020, accounting for 3.6 million OSYs during the start of the pandemic. For the school year 2022 to 2023, the PSA's annual poverty indicator survey reveals that 18% of children ages 5 to 24 years old were not enrolled in school. Around 50% of out-of-school youths belong to families whose income fall within the bottom 30% of the population on the base per capita income. It is tragic that out-of-school youth are not only the most vulnerable but also the most susceptible to discrimination among other sectors in society. Hence, the high percentage of Filipino out-of-school youth are at increased risk of exploitation in a lifetime cycle of poverty. While we endeavor to give every Filipino an opportunity to attend and finish school, we must also ensure that those who are not able to attend school or those who have not finished a course are being treated fairly. It is for this reason that the Committee on Youth and Sports and Development has approved House Bill 9347 or the Magna Carta of the Out-of-School Youth under Committee Report 805. Mr. Speaker, the Magna Carta of out-of-school youth should serve as an instrument in protecting the rights of the OSY, protect them from discrimination and violence, ensure their representation in various platforms, and preserve their cultural identity. Mr. Speaker, the Magna Carta of out-of-school youth is indeed a companion bill of House Bill 8910 or the Adolescence Pregnancy Prevention Act, which this August chamber has earlier approved on third reading on September 5, 2023. While not all OSYs confront issues related to teenage or adult pregnancy, it is a truesome that adolescent pregnancies are leading causes of out-of-school dropouts either permanently or at their last temporarily. Adolescent pregnancy leads to permanently dropping out of schools as adolescent mothers is constrained to adopt to the difficult challenges of conception, childbirth, and raising their babies. Adolescent fathers are likewise directed, affected, as they are expected to provide financial support. This, of course, will almost certainly impact the employment opportunities and adolescent mothers are more likely to obtain scarce or limited incomes if they even able to participate in the labor workforce at all, trapping them further in a generational cycles of poverty. This certainly have great implications on the poverty incidence in the Philippines, which the United Nations Population Fund estimates a loss of 33 billion pesos each year due to adolescent pregnancy, while the National Economic and Development Authority cited that adolescent pregnancies result up to 42 billion pesos loss in potential earnings of our country. This, in short, is an issue that affects every one of us whether we directly experience it or not. Mr. Speaker, the state of mind remains to be the primary and most resource-laden agent for change in our lives of our OSY. Its resources, however, must be equitable, distributed, and shared to address multifarious needs and concerns of our people. It is in this context that we need to support and participation of this August chamber to help our OSYs overcome formidable changes they are facing. Para sa mga kabataan Pilipino, ang Magna Carta ng out-of-school youth. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of interpretation and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is now open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I now move to close the period of interpretation and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The period of interpretation and debate is now hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby open.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual or committee amendments, I now move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 9347.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9347 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9347 is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations, Faustino D of the Sixth District, Fifth District of Isabela. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may we acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Dim Sar M. Salih of the Lone District of Tahu Tawi. They are chiefs and administrative officers of different hospitals in the province of Tahu Tawi. From Datu Halunsakilan Memorial Hospital or the IPHO Tahu Tawi, Dr. Sangkula Laja, Sani Suate, Kadija Abdulhalim, Amar Hassan, Amina Andan. From Datu Wan Ligadung Lipai Memorial Hospital, Dr. Muhammad Ali Burahim, Conchita Pescadera, Marylin Houdin, Araya Saali. From Datu Alawatdin Bandon Senior Memorial Hospital, Dr. Ahmad Falmi Usman, Rusina Badon. From Kagayan de Tahu Tawi District Hospital, Dr. Marilu Santa Cruz, Edward Tan. From Languyan Municipal Hospital, Charity Mastool. And from the Holy Family Hospital, Dr. Edward Chio.
For the guests of the Honorable Dim Sar M. Salih of the Lone District of Tahu Tawi, we welcome all his guests in the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize and welcome to the House of Representatives the guests of our representative, the Third District of Pangasinan, of Representative Maria Rachel Arenas. We have the following. We have Christine Terrado, Marita Aquino, Rosario Banlao, Engineer Willy Acosta Duque, Rose Pangani Ban, Jessica Basdando, Paolo Bautista, Rich Pagco, Nilam Pangilinan, Chris Latnik Dow, Eileen Kusilit, Maria Fatima Villena, Rosich Sims, Jessica Concepcion Cantos, Janet Karandang, Roderick Cruz, Zara Balisteros, Victor Calimbas, Oscar Alistair Lapid Dario, and Hinolex Cainglis.
The guests of Maria Rachel Arenas from the representative of the Third District of Pangasinan, we welcome you to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we also recognize and welcome to the House of Representatives the guests of Honorable Josefina Talliado, our representative of the First District of Camarines Norte. The guests are from the province of Camarines Norte. We have Honorable Artemio Serdon, Honorable Ramon Baning, Honorable Muriel Pandi, Honorable Renato Moreno, Honorable Joseph Christopher Panotes, Honorable Gerardo Quinones, Honorable Elena Borja, Honorable Ms. Sarah Jade Ikatlo, Ms. Gina Moreno, Ms. Maria Nerissa Brago, Mr. Redwill Capones, Mr. Gabriel Hencha, Ms. Mary Joy Carranza, and Mr. Nestor Borja.
To the guests of the Honorable Josefina B. Talliado, the First District of Camarines Norte, we welcome you to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9470 as contained in Committee Report Number 819, submitted by the Committee on Justice and copies of which have been distributed to the members. I request, therefore, that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 9470.
House Bill 9470, an act creating one additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the judicial region to be stationed in the municipality of Labason, province of Sambuaga del Norte, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14J of Batas Mambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Rigorization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now recognize the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores from the Second District of Bukit Non and the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice for his sponsorship speech.
The gentleman from Bukit Non, Congressman the Honorable Flores is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we move that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9470 be considered as its sponsorship speech, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Congressman Flores. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I now move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9470.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9470 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number All those in favor, say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9470 is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations, Congressman Flores. Does the sponsor wish to say something? I just congratulate. Thank you, Congressman Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we consider House Bill Number 9471 under Committee Report Number 820, submitted by the Committee on Justice, and therefore, request that the Secretary General read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the House Bill Number 9471.
House Bill Number 9471, an act creating four additional branches of the municipal trial court in the Second Judicial Region to be stationed in the municipalities of Diadi, Quezon, Santa Fe, and Alfonso Castañeda, province of Nueva Vizcaya, and appropriating funds, therefore, amending for the purpose Section 30 of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship interpolation is now open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores from the Second District of Bukidnon, be recognized to deliver a sponsorship speech.
The gentleman from Bukidnon, Congressman Flores, is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we move that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9471 be considered as its sponsorship speech.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I now move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
There is a motion. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Now we open the period of amendments. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship, the period of amendments is hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9471.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9471 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9471 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we consider House Bill Number 9472 under Committee Report Number 821, submitted by the Committee on Justice, and therefore, request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 9472.
House Bill 9472, an act creating four additional branches of the municipal trial court in cities in the Eleventh Judicial Region to be stationed in General Santos City, province of South Cotabato, and appropriating funds, therefore, amending for the purpose Section 29 of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair again hears none. The period of sponsorship is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairman of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores from the Second District of Bukidnon, for his sponsorship speech.
The gentleman from Bukidnon, Congressman Flores, is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we request that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9472 be considered as its sponsorship speech, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wished to interpolate, I now move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9472.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9472 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9472 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we consider House Bill Number 9473 under Committee Report Number 822, as submitted by the Committee on Justice, and therefore, direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title, House Bill Number 9473.
House Bill Number 9473, an act creating one additional branch of the Regional Trial Court and two additional branches of the municipal trial court in the Sixth Judicial Region to be stationed in the municipality of Ibahaí, province of Aclan, and appropriating funds, therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14G and Section 30 of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores as Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice for his sponsorship speech.
The gentleman from Bukidnon is again recognized. Congressman Flores, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we request that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9473 be considered as its sponsorship speech.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wished to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member, no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9473. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9473 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9473 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we consider House Bill Number 9474 under Committee Report Number 823, submitted by the Committee on Justice, and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the House Bill Number 9474.
House Bill 9474, an act creating six additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Sixth Judicial Region to be stationed in the cities of Silai and Victoria's, province of Negroes Occidental, and appropriating funds, therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14G of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? Hearing none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores from the Second District of Bukidnon for his sponsorship speech.
The Second District, the gentleman from the Second District of Bukidnon, the Honorable Jonathan Flores is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we request that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9474 be considered as the sponsorship speech for the measure, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wished to interpolate, I now move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed and terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9474.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9474 on second reading. All those in favor, say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9474 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we consider House Bill Number 9475 under Committee Report Number 824, submitted by the Committee on Justice, and request that the Secretary General read the title of this bill.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the House Bill Number 9475.
House Bill Number 9475, an act creating one additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the First Judicial Region to be stationed in the municipality of La Paz, province of Abra, and appropriating funds, therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14A of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores, the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice for his sponsorship speech.
The Vice Chairman of the Committee on Justice, Honorable Flores, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we request that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9475 be considered as the sponsorship speech for the measure.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I now move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9475.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9475 on second reading. All those who are in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9475 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we consider House Bill Number 9476 under Committee Report Number 825, submitted by the Committee on Justice, and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the House Bill Number 9476.
House Bill Number 9476, an act creating one additional branch of the municipal trial court in the First Judicial Region to be stationed in the municipality of Latrindad, province of Benguet, and appropriating funds, therefore, amending for the purpose Section 30 of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores from the Second District of Bukidnon for him to deliver his sponsorship speech.
The gentleman from Bukidnon, Honorable Flores, is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we request that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9476 be considered as the sponsorship speech for the measure.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I now move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9476.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9476 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9476 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9477 under Committee Report Number 826, submitted by the Committee on Justice, and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the House Bill Number 9477.
House Bill Number 9477, an act creating two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Seventh Judicial Region to be stationed in the municipalities of Candihai and Valencia, province of Bohol, and appropriating funds, therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14H of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores, the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice for his sponsorship speech.
The Vice Chairman of the Committee on Justice, Honorable Flores, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we request that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9477 be considered as a sponsorship speech for the measure.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I now move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9477.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9477 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9477 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we consider House Bill Number 9478 under Committee Report Number 827, submitted by the Committee on Justice. under Committee Report Number 827 submitted by the Committee on Justice and request that the Secretary General read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title, Number 9478.
House Bill 9478, Anna creating one additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the Sixth Judicial Region to be stationed in the City of Kabangkalan, Province of Negroes Occidental, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14G of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores, the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice for his sponsorship speech.
The gentleman from Bukidnon, Congressman Flores, is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we request that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9478 be considered as the sponsorship speech for the measure.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9478.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9478 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9478 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9479 under Committee Report Number 828 submitted by the Committee on Justice and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 9479.
House Bill Number 9479, Anna creating two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Eighth Judicial Region to be stationed in the City of Maasin and in the Municipality of Sogod, Province of Southern Lete, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14I of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The sponsorship and debate period is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores, for his sponsorship speech.
The Vice Chair of the Committee on Justice, Congressman Flores, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we request that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9479 be considered as the sponsorship speech for the measure, Mr. Speaker?
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9479.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9479 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9479 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9480 under Committee Report Number 829 submitted by the Committee on Justice and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 9480.
House Bill 9480, Anna creating one additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the Eleventh Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Sulok, Province of Davao de Asur, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14L of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores, for his sponsorship speech.
The gentleman from Bukidnon, the Congressman Flores, is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we request that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9480 be considered as the sponsorship speech for the measure.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9480.
There is a motion to approve, House Bill Number 9480 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9480 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9481 under Committee Report Number 830 submitted by the Committee on Justice and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 9481.
House Bill Number 9481, Anna creating four additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Fourth Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipities of Rosario and San Juan, Province of Batangas, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14E of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores from the Second District of Bukidnon and Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice for his sponsorship speech.
The Vice Chairman of the Committee on Justice, Congressman Flores, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we request that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9481 be considered as the sponsorship speech for the measure.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
We are open, we already opened the period of amendments. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9481.
There is a motion to approve, House Bill Number 9481, on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9481 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9482 under Committee Report Number 831 submitted by the Committee on Justice and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of the bill, House Bill Number 9482.
House Bill 9482, Anna creating one additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the Ninth Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of San Miguel, Province of San Buanga del Sur, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14J of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Majority Leader, I think you have to first recognize our sponsor.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores, the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice for his sponsorship speech.
Thank you. The Vice Chairman of the Committee on Justice, Congressman Flores, is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we request that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9482 be considered as the sponsorship speech for the measure.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9482.
There is a motion to approve, House Bill Number 9482, on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9482 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9483 under Committee Report Number 832 submitted by the Committee on Justice and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the measure.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the House Bill Number 9483.
House Bill Number 9483, Anna creating ten additional branches of the Regional Trial Court and three additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in cities in the Fourth Judicial Region to be stationed in the City of Santa Rosa, Province of Laguna, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14E and Section 29 of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee of Justice, the Honorable Jonathan Keith Flores, for his sponsorship speech.
The gentleman from Bukidnon is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may we request that the explanatory note attached to House Bill Number 9483 be considered as the sponsorship speech for the measure.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9483.
There is a motion to approve, House Bill Number 9483, on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9483 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9484 as contained in Committee Report 833 submitted by the Committee on Justice and may I request the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 9484.
House Bill 9484, Anna creating two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Fifth Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Labo, Province of Camarines Norte, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14F of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Representative Loretto B. Acharon of the Lone District of General Santos City to sponsor the measure.
The Congressman Loretto Acharon is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Distinguished colleagues, it is my honor to sponsor House Bill Number 9484 and in relation thereto, may I request that the explanatory note attached to this proposed bill be considered as my sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9484.
There is a motion to approve, House Bill Number 9484, on second reading. All those in favor, say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. The House Bill Number 9484 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9485 as contained in Committee Report 834 submitted by the Committee on Justice and may I request the Secretary General to read the title of the said bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is hereby directed to read the title of House Bill Number 9485.
House Bill Number 9485, Anna creating one additional branch of the Municipal Trial Court in the Tenth Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Socorro, Province of Sirigao del Norte, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 30 of Batas Pambansa Bilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Loretto B. Acharon, the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice.
The Vice Chair of the Committee on Justice, Congressman Acharon, is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Distinguished colleagues, I'm honored to sponsor House Bill Number 9485 and for this purpose, may I request that the explanatory note attached to this proposed bill be considered as my sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9485.
There is a motion to approve on... House Bill Number 9485 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those... Against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9485 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider on House Bill Number 9486, under Committee Report 835, and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said measure.
Is there any objection? The chair again hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the House Bill Number 9486.
House Bill 9486, Anna Creating Eight Additional Branches of the Regional Trial Court in the National Capital Judicial Region to be stationed in the City of Caloocan and Appropriating Funds Therefore, amending for the purpose, Section 14D of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Loretto B. Acharon, the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, to sponsor the measure.
The gentleman Congressman Loretto Acharon is hereby recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Distinguished colleagues, on behalf of the Chairman of the Committee on Justice, it is my honor to sponsor House Bill Number 9486, and in relation thereto, may I request that the explanatory note attached to this bill be considered as my sponsorship speech.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby... Open?
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments are hereby closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9487.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 9486... Eight-seven?
Eight-six.
Eight-six. On second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9486 is hereby approved on second reading. One-minute suspension. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9487 as contained in the Committee Report 836, submitted by the Committee on Justice, and may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 9487.
House Bill Number 9487, Anna Creating Two Additional Branches of the Municipal Trial Court in the Sixth Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipities of Santa Barbara and Pavia, Province of Iloilo, and Appropriating Funds Therefore, amending for the purpose, Section 30 of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The... Period of interpolation and debate is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee of Justice, the Honorable Representative Loretto Acharon of the Lone District of General Santos City, to sponsor this measure.
The Honorable Acharon is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Distinguished colleagues, on behalf of the Chairman of the Committee on Justice, it is my honor to sponsor House Bill Number 9487, and for this purpose, may I request that the explanatory note of this bill be considered as my sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of interpolation and debate is... Terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Period of amendment is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual or committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9487.
As many as those in favor, say aye. Those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 8... 9487 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9488 as contained in the Committee Report 837, submitted by the Committee on Justice, and may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill Number 9488.
House Bill 9488, Anna Creating One Additional Branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Seventh Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Mualboal, Province of Subu, and Appropriating Funds Therefore, amending for the purpose, Section 14H of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
The period of sponsorship and debate is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee of Justice, the Honorable Representative Loretto Acharon, to sponsor the measure.
The Honorable Acharon is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I am pleased to sponsor House Bill Number 9488, and in relation to this measure, may I request that the explanatory note attached to this proposed bill be considered as my sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of interpolation and debate is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there an objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9488.
All those in favor, say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 948... 9488 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9489 as contained in the Committee Report 838, submitted by the Committee on Justice, and may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 9489.
House Bill Number 9489, Anna Creating One Additional Branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Second Judicial Region to be stationed in the Municipality of Alicia, Province of Isabela, and Appropriating Funds Therefore, amending for the purpose, Section 14B of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of debate, interpolation and debate is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson on the Committee of Justice, the Honorable Representative Loretto Acharon, to sponsor the measure.
The Honorable Acharon is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On behalf of the Chairman of the Committee on Justice, it is this representation's honor to sponsor House Bill Number 9489, and in relation thereto, may I request that the explanatory note attached to this bill be treated and adopted as my sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of interpolation and debate is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendments is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9489.
As many as in favor, say aye. Those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9489 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9490 as contained in Committee Report 839, submitted by the Committee on Justice, and may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the House Bill 9490.
House Bill 9490, Anna Creating Four Additional Branches of the Regional Trial Court in the Eleventh Judicial Region and Appropriating Funds Therefore, amending for the purpose, Section 14L of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Representative Loretto Acharon, to sponsor the measure.
The Honorable Acharon is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Distinguished colleagues, I'm honored to sponsor House Bill Number 9490, and in relation to this measure, may I request that the explanatory note attached to this bill be considered as my sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9490.
As many as in favor, say aye. Those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 9490 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9491 as contained in Committee Report 840, as contained in Committee Report 840, as submitted. May I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill Number 9491.
House Bill Number 9491, Anna creating three additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 6th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Pasay and in the municipality of Dumbangga, Province of Iloilo, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14G of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Representative Loretto Acharon, to sponsor the measure.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Uh, Honorable Acharon is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues. It is, uh, it is an honor to sponsor House Bill Number 9491. And in relation to this measure, may I request that the explanatory note attached to this proposed bill be treated and adopted as the sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
Is there any objection?
Oh, sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9491.
As many as in favor say aye. Those against say nay. The highest habit. House Bill Number 9491 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9492 as contained in the Committee Report 841, as submitted by the Committee on Justice, and may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the House Bill Number 9492.
House Bill 9492, Anna creating two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court and two additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in cities in the 11th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Mati, Province of Davao or Riental, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14L and Section 29 of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The sponsorship and debate is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Representative Loretto Acharon, to sponsor the measure.
Honorable Acharon is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues. It is this representation's honor to sponsor House Bill Number 9492. And in relation thereto, may I request that the explanatory note of this bill be considered as my sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9492.
As many as in favor say aye. Those against say nay. The highest habit. House Bill Number 9492 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9493 as contained in the Committee Report 842, submitted by the Committee on Justice, and may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill Number 9493.
House Bill Number 9493, Anna creating four additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 4th Judicial Region, two of which to be designated as family courts to be stationed in the municipalities of Brooks Point and Coron, and two of which to be designated as special courts for environmental cases to be stationed in the municipalities of Coron and Rojas, all in the province of Palawan, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14E of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee of Justice, the Honorable Representative Loretto Acharon, to sponsor the measure.
The Honorable Acharon is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm honored to sponsor House Bill Number 9493. And in relation to this measure, may I request that the explanatory note of this bill be treated and adapted as my sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9493.
As many as in favor say aye. Those against say nay. The highest habit. House Bill Number 9493 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now consider House Bill Number 9494 as contained in Committee Report 843, as submitted by the Committee on Justice, and may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill Number 9494.
House Bill 9494, Anna creating two additional branches of the Municipal Trial Court in cities in the 11th Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Tagum, Province of Davao del Norte, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 29 of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Representative Loretto Acharon, to sponsor the measure.
The Honorable Acharon is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Mr. Speaker. It is my honor to sponsor House Bill Number 9494. And in relation to this measure, may I request that the explanatory note attached to this bill be considered as my sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member or individual nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9494.
As many as in favor say aye. Those against say nay. The highest habit. House Bill Number 9494 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9495 as contained in Committee Report 844, submitted by the Committee on Justice, and may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 9495.
House Bill Number 9495, Anna creating one additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the 10th Judicial Region to be stationed in the municipality of Maramag, Province of Bukidnon, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14K of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee of Justice, the Honorable Representative Loretto Acharon, to sponsor the measure.
The Honorable Acharon is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues. I am pleased to sponsor House Bill Number 9495. And in relation to this measure, may I request that the explanatory note attached to this proposed bill be considered as my sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9495.
As many as in favor say aye. Those against say nay. The highest habit. House Bill Number 9495 is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 9496 as contained in Committee Report 845, as submitted by the Committee on Justice, and may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill?
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill 9496.
House Bill 9496, Anna creating two additional branches of the Regional Trial Court in the 2nd Judicial Region to be stationed in the city of Ilagan and in the municipality of Tumawini, Province of Isabela, and appropriating funds therefore, amending for the purpose Section 14B of Batas Pambansabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judiciary Reorganization Act of 1980 as amended.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Vice Chairperson of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Representative Loretto Acharon, to sponsor the measure.
The Honorable Acharon is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues. It is this presentation's honor and pride to sponsor House Bill Number 9496. And in relation to this proposed measure, may I request that the explanatory note attached to this proposed bill be treated and adapted as my sponsorship speech.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is open. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no individual nor committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now vote on second reading, House Bill Number 9496.
As many as in favor say aye. Those against say nay. The highest habit. House Bill Number 9496 is approved on second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, may we request for a few minutes of suspension?
Please suspend it. Session resume. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the business of, for Thursday and Friday, I move for the omnibus approval on second reading for the following local bills. House Bill 9396 under Committee Report 808, House Bill 9519 under Committee Report 854, under the Committee of Natural Resources, as well as House Bill Number 9468 under Committee Report 817, as well as House Bill 9469 under Committee Report 818, under the Committee of Transportation, as well as House Bill Number 9500, contained in Committee Report 846, House Bill Number 9501, contained in Committee Report 847, under the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, as well as House Bill Number 9504, contained in Committee Report 848, as well as House Bill Number 9505, contained in Committee Report 849, under the Committee on Economic Affairs, Trade and Industry, as well as House Bill Number 9507, contained in Committee Report 851, House Bill Number 9508, contained in Committee Report 852, House Bill Number 9509, contained in Committee Report 853, under the Committee of Higher and Technical Education.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of the bill.
House Bill Number 9396, Anna declaring the waters surrounding the Panaon Island in the municipalities of Liloan, Pintuyan, San Francisco, and San Ricardo in the province of Southern Lete a protected area with a category of protected seascape under the National Integrated Protected Area System to be referred to as the Panaon Island Protected Seascape, providing for its management and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 9519, Anna declaring the Akasha Trees in the municipality of Binalonan, Province of Pangasinan, as local heritage trees and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 9468, Anna establishing a district office of the Land Transportation Office in the municipality of Pandan, Province of Antike, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 9469, Anna converting the Land Transportation Office or the Neta District Office into a Class A District Office, renaming the same as the Land Transportation Office Binalonan District Office, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 9500, Anna changing the name of New Partido High School in Barangay Katagbakan, Municipality of Goa, Province of Camarinesor, to New Partido National High School. House Bill Number 9501, Anna changing the name of San Sebastian Fisheries High School in Barangay San Sebastian, Municipality of Lagonoy, Province of Camarinesor, to San Sebastian National High School. House Bill Number 9504, Anna establishing a special economic zone in the city of Bacolod, Province of Negroes Occidental, creating for the purpose the Bacolod Special Economic Zone Authority and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 9505, Anna establishing a special economic zone in the province of Bohol, creating for the purpose the Northern Bohol Special Economic Zone Authority and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill Number 9507, Anna establishing a Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center in the 6th Congressional District of Quezon City and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 9508, Anna establishing a Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center in the municipality of Kawayan, Province of Biliran, and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 9509, Anna establishing a Technical Education and Skills Development Authority Training and Assessment Center in the municipality of Rizal, Province of Nueva Ecija, and appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider the respective explanatory notes as the sponsorship for the said measures.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The period of sponsorship and debate is open.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we, um, close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments, and if any, um, contained committee reports approve of them.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I, um, there being no individual amendments, I move that we close the period of individual amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The period of amendment is closed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading for the following House bills.
There is an omnibus approval, uh, motion for the approval of the affirmation bills. As many as say, as in favor, say aye. Those against say nay. The highest habit. The affirmation bills is approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Angelica Natasha Ko. We request for the recognition of the following students from the Polytechnic University of the Philippines, the Quezon City Branch.
To the guest of Honorable Angelica Natasha Ko, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration for approval on third reading of House Bill Number 9153, and request that the Secretary General read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The Secretary General will read the titles of the bills, and thereafter I'll call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9153, Anna mandating all correctional, custodial, and detention facilities to implement a contraband detection and control system and providing penalties for possessing, introducing, or aiding and abetting the entry of contraband inside such facilities. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9153. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Acharon, Asidre, Ako, Adiyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Patalyon, Amante, Amatong Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquinamagsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Rogansya, Assiso, Atahete, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Priones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayonui, Calderon, Calixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chanchato, Chua, Chungalo, Coangelica Natasha, Coelizaldi, Copilar, Cojuanco Jaime, Eduardo Mark, Cojuanco Mark, Colada, Colientes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuak, Juarez, Madagoak, Dalipe, Dalog Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Nimoporom, Muhammad Kali, Nimoporos, Itiamina, Tionisyo, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, 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 Tionishio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Inverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garinda, Sataya, Gato, Goed, Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Gico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga Ara, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Liligarda, Libanan, Limkaychong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Mag sino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Navan Isay, Nogralis Wan, Fidel Felipe, Nogralis Margarita, Nolasco, Ouaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ong Tuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Padearnos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisya Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramonjolo, Reyes, Rilio Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Sieda Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame Santos, Saulug, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Shai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Teves, Tianco, Tiyang, Tolentino, Tool for Irwin, Tool for Joseline, Tool for Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutorti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uy, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villa Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villa Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villa Razas Suarez, Villa Rica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Krist chantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9153. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Alba, Alonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Angara, Omentado, Barzaga, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Biron, Bustos, Calderon, Kari, Chan, Coelizaldi, Copilar, Colada, Dayanghirang, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Espares, Fernandez, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Fortez, Frasco, Goed Christopher, Gonzalez Sandro, Ginto, Gulyas, Horibata, Co Olga Ara, Co Wilton, Lagman, Lazatin, Legarda, Libanan, Luistro, Madrona, Marcoleta, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Nogralis Margarita, Nolasco, Ouaminal, Olaso, Ong Tuan, Ordanes, Padearnos, Paglas, Pasqual, Pimentel, Puno, Rector, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Reyes, Rilio, Romero, Romulo, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salvame, Santos, Swansing Horasyo, Tambunting, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Shai, Tan Watko, Tupas, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uy, Vargas, Villa, Villa Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villa Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villa Razas Suarez, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Eric, Zamora Maria Carmen.
With 208 members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 9153 is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading, House Bill Number 9293, and request that the Secretary General read the title of the measure, and thereafter call for nominal voting. I mean, call the roll for voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read House Bill Number 9293, and thereafter I'll call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9293, an act establishing the Philippine Atomic Energy Regulatory Authority and providing for a comprehensive legal framework for nuclear safety, security, and safeguards in the peaceful utilization of nuclear energy in the Philippines and appropriating funds therefore. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9293. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Ako, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amanteng Matong Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Rogansya, Assisyo, Atayde, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buain, Bulut Begtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Cagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Tsungalaw, Co Angelica Natasha, Coelizaldi, Copilar, Cojuanko Jaime, Eduardo Mark, Cojuanko Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Dagooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Del Mar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kalid, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Tionishio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Inverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortez, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John.
Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Garcia, is recognized.
Ang boto ko po ay no, at nais ko po sanang bigyan ng pagkakataon para ipaliwanag ang aking boto. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary General, may continue.
Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Goed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Gico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Cong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaychong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Mag sino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikis. Manuel.
Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Manuel.
Ang boto po ng kabataan sa House Bill na ito ay no, and I would like to explain my vote. Thank you.
Secretary General, may continue.
Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Rivilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Nogralis Wan, Fidel Felipe, Nogralis Margarita, Nolasco, Ouaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ong Tuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Padearnos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Peña, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primisya Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramonjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yulo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Sieda Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulug, Silverio, Singson Rochelle, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Shai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Teves, Tianco, Tiyang, Tolentino, Tool for Irwin, Tool for Joseline, Tool for Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutorti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uy, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villa, Villa Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villa Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villa Razas Suarez, Villa Rica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Krist chantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria, Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9293. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Alba, Alonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Angara, Barzaga, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Biron, Bustos, Calderon, Kari, Chan, Coelizaldi, Copilar, Colada, Dayanghirang, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Ian Paul, Espares, Fernandez, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Fortez, Frasco, Goed Christopher, Gonzalez Sandro, Ginto, Gulyas, Horibata, Co Olga, Co Wilton, Lagman, Lazatin, Legarda, Libanan, Luistro, Madrona, Marcoleta, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Nogralis Margarita, Nolasco, Ouaminal, Olaso, Ong Tuan, Padearnos, Paglas, Pasqual, Pimentel, Puno, Rector, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Reyes, Rilio, Romero, Romulo, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salvame, Santos, Swansing Horasyo, Tambunting, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Shai, Tupas, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uy, Vargas, Villa, Villa Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villa Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villa Razas Suarez, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Eric, Zamora Maria Carmen.
With 200 members voting in the affirmative, seven in the negative, and two abstention, House Bill Number 9293 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Albert Garcia for his explanation of vote.
The Honorable Albert Garcia from the second district of Batan is recognized. You have three minutes. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this representation votes no for the very reason that I believe that this bill is anchored on wrong assumptions. Sinasabi po na ligtas na mura, ligtas na malinis, at ligtas, likas na ligtas ang nuclear. However, the issues we raised during the various deliberation regarding this bill calls in question this claim with the wrong premise as basis, Mr. Speaker. Mali ang ating magiging desisyon, mali ang ating magiging batas, at mali ang ating magiging outcome o resulta. Mr. Speaker, let me briefly go through the issues and wrong assumptions. Una po pagdating sa local autonomy. May kasabihan po tayo na all politics is local. Pero hindi lamang po yun, Mr. Speaker. All development and all disasters are also local. Bakit po natin ipagkakait sa local government units ang desisyon kung gusto nila mag-host ng nuclear sa kanilang lugar? Wala po tayong mahahanap na provisions pagdating sa partisipasyon ng local government unit dito po sa bill na ito. Sana po bigyan natin ang pagkakataon ang local government units umayon o mag-agree kung gusto nila mag-host at makapagdesisyon para sa kanilang magandang kinabukasan. Pangalawa, management and final disposal of spent fuel. Up to now, Mr. Speaker, the fact remains na wala pa rin pong solusyon sa buong mundo pagdating sa final disposal of spent fuel. Merong mga sumusubok, pero again, the fact remains wala pa rin pong solusyon ang problema ng spent fuel. Pangatlo po yung accountability ng fill atom. Dito po talagang in-insulate at super independent po yung fill atom, Mr. Speaker. Paano yung kanyang accountability at kanyang responsibilidad kung magaka-problema ang nuclear energy dito po sa ating bansa? In fact, nakalagay pa rin pa po sa bill na ito, Mr. Speaker, na dapat ay walang negative opinion tungkol sa nuclear ang mga ilalagay na appointee dito sa fill atom. Kapag sobrang bias po ang ating mga ilalagay dito, this could cloud their judgment, especially kapag pinag-uusapan ang issue ng safety, Mr. Speaker. At panghuli po yung financial feasibility po ng nuclear, Mr. Speaker. Kahit gaano niyo pong bali-balik ta rin, Mr. Speaker, mas mahal ang nuclear. Tingnan ko po ngayon sa internet, ang presyo po ng France, which is majority of its power comes from nuclear, ay fourteen pesos per kilowatt hour. Ang meral ko po nasa twelve pesos. Ang maraming probinsya sa ating bansa, including the province of Batan, ay nasa ten pesos lamang po, Mr. Speaker. To wrap up, Mr. Speaker, magpakatotoo po tayo. Kung may panganib, wag nating sabihin na ligtas. Kung walang solusyon ng nuclear waste, wag natin sabihin na meron na. Kung mas mahal, wag nating sabihin na mura. Meron pong sikat na kanta sa atin po, Mr. Speaker, na nagsasabi na may kumakalat na balita na ang kaligtasan ay madaling makuha. Bago maniwala, mag-isip-isip ka muna. Marami ang namamatay sa maling akala. So ito pong bill na to ay nakabase sa maling akala. Therefore, I vote no, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat po.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Angelica Garcia for her explanation of vote.
Honorable Maria Angela Garcia of the third district of Batan is recognized. You have three minutes. Please. is recognized. You have three minutes. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, naais ko pong ipahiag muli na sinusuportahan ko ang layunin ng House Bill 9293 o ang Philippine National Nuclear Energy Safety Act. Subalit, no ang aking boto dahil sa mga sumusunod. Una, kulang o kapos ang mga provision upang tiyakin ang ligtas at malinis na paggamit ng nuclear energy bilang source ng kuryente sa ating bansa. Lalo na ukol sa radioactive waste management at end-of-plant-life decommissioning. Pangalawa, ayon sa our World End Data, kontra sa sinasabi ng ating sponsor, hindi pinakamura ang kuryente mula sa nuclear energy. Sa makatuwid, sa buong mundo, sampung porcento lamang ang kuryente na galing sa nuclear energy. Ang fiscal independence na tinutulak sa pagtatag ng fill atom bilang isang independent authority ay at the expense of the Filipino people. Ang maargriabado, ang maargriabado ay ang buong sambayan ng Filipino. Dahil ang gagastusin para sa budget ng fill atom sa unang sampung taon, ay ipapataw bilang universal charge sa lahat ng residential, commercial, at industrial electricity end users. Mula sa lahat ng sources of electricity, hindi lamang mula sa nuclear energy. Kung totoong likas na mura ang kuryente mula sa nuclear energy, bakit natin kailangan dagdagan ang babayaran na kuryente ng bawat pamilyang Filipino? Dahil sa mga rasong ito, the Third District of Batan, through this representation, votes no. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Raoul Manuel for his explanation of vote.
The Honorable Raoul Manuel is recognized. You have three minutes. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. As part of this explanation of no vote to House Bill 9293, I would like to take this opportunity to rebut the claim na disinformation ang mga punto nilalatag natin sa period of interpolation. Mr. Speaker, hindi po disinformation na ating pinopoint out ang naging kalidad na mga diskusyon, ang nangyaring pagboto, at maging ang committee approval ng House Bill na ito. Kung may mga standing questions sa paanay ito dumaan sa committee, then this can set a bad precedent on other bills and on other committees. Pangalawa, Mr. Speaker, the immediate context and stated premise of the bill assume that nuclear power is applicable and safe in an archipelagic, biodiversity-rich, and ecologically critical country like the Philippines despite the lack of expert-led assessments that conclude the same. This push towards nuclear power is being made in the face of the declining trend of nuclear power even in Western countries, which are in the process of decommissioning their existing plants. A third point, Mr. Speaker, in the current global context, world powers like the U.S. have also used partnerships for nuclear energy as a tool to root themselves deeper in countries like ours and make us more dependent on them. These agreements span decades, even up to a century. This makes sure that the U.S. and other foreign companies who will supply us with the technology can be able to hold our energy supply by the neck for an extended period of time. This is exemplified by the fact that while the Philippine Department of Energy is the party on one hand in the recently signed 123 agreement with the U.S. government, the counterpart is the U.S. Department of State, which is concerned primarily about foreign policy and not directly on energy-related matters. Fourth point, Mr. Speaker, this is also in the face of existing concerns on nuclear waste with our country being a potential dump site for the U.S. and other countries' nuclear wastes and with the negative effects that it can have on our communities and the environment. A problem that even advanced countries have not been able to completely solve. Fifth point, Mr. Speaker, on nuclear and renewable energy, we would like to make it clear that nuclear energy is not renewable and should not be packaged as renewable. Calls for nuclear energy become less credible if it comes with putting down renewable energy, which should be the number-one source of all countries considering the climate emergency. If we are to compare nuclear and the renewable energy in terms of levelized costs of energy from building the plant, ongoing costs, and operating costs, dihamak, Mr. Speaker, na mas mura ang solar bumaba ng eighty-nine percent in the past ten years since 2009, nasa forty dollars per megawatt hour. Onshore wind bumaba ng seventy percent to forty-one dollars, while nuclear energy tumaas pa ng twenty-six percent to one hundred fifty-five dollars. And, Mr. Speaker, with that, masasabi po natin that really the way forward should be to harness our indigenous sources of renewable energy. So based on those points raised by this representation and on other fellow representatives who researched well and interpolated on this topic, this youth representation votes no to House Bill 9293. Salamat, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration on third reading House Bill Number 9320, and request that the Secretary General read the title of the measure, and then thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here's none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 9320, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9320, Anestablishing a Reform in the Regulation of Collective Bargaining Agreement, Amending for the Purpose Presidential Decree Number 442 as amended, otherwise known as the Labor Code of the Philippines. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9320. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Assistyo, Atay de Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbys, Baronda, Barzaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautistalim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut, Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon, Ui, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagnan, Cardema, Kari, Castrofrance, Castrojean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chunggalao, Coangelika, Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Kohuangko, Jaime, Eduardo, Mar, Kohuangko, Mar, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Dagooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kali, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisia Domingo, Duavit, Duhalii, DuTerte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Neply, Gonzales Sandro, Coriseta, Giko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Harrezco, Hataman Hernandez, Herrera, Horebata, Javier, Ko Olga Ara, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sanie, Lara, Lazatin, Liligar, Dalibanan, Limcaichong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino Malapitan, Mangawang, Manigis, Manuel, Manronion, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano, Dizon, Padernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Pena, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Premisa, Sagabas, Humaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rekto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilia Bryan, Revilia Ramonjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Sieda Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sacaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rishel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Theodoro, Teves, Tianco, Tien, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umalii, Unabia, Ungab, Ui, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velozatwason, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villafuerte Luis Raymond, Villafuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christchantel, Yap Christofferson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yu Lo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora Maria Carmen, Zamora Isabel Maria Zubiri.
Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 9320. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Alba, Alonte, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amatong, Angara, Barzaga, Bautista, Bautistalim, Benitez, Biron, Bustos, Calderon, Kari, Chan, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Colada, Dayanghirang, De Jesus, De Venesia, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kali, Duavit, Duhalii, DuTerte, Di Ian Paul, Espares, Fernandez, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Fortes, Frasco, Go Ed Christopher, Gonzalesandro, Ginto, Gulyas, Horebata, Ko Olga Ara, Ko Wilton, Lagman, Lazatin, Legarda, Libanan, Luistro, Madrona, Marcoleta, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Ongchuan, Padernos, Paglas, Pasqual, Pimentel, Puno, Rekto, Remulia, Revilia Bryan, Reyes, Rilio, Romero, Romulo, Sagarbaria, Sacaluran, Salceda, Santos, Swansing Horasyo, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tupas, Umalii, Unabia, Ungab, Ui, Vargas, Villia, Villafuerte Luis Raymond, Villafuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villarasa Suarez, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christofferson, Yap Eric, Zamora Maria Carmen.
With two hundred and ten members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstention, House Bill Number 9320 is hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the omnibus approval of the following local bills pertaining to state universities and colleges. House Bill Number 9314, House Bill Number 9315, House Bill Number 9316, House Bill Number 9317, House Bill Number 9318, House Bill Number 9319, House Bill Number 9332, House Bill Number 9334, and request that the Secretary General read the title of the said measures and therefore after call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? Chair here's none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of the bills, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 9314, Anact Converting the Baao Community College in the Municipality of Baao, Province of Camarinisur, into a state college and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 9315, Anact Converting the JH Cerilla State College located in Barangay Mati, Municipality of San Miguel, Province of Zambuanga del Sur, into a state university and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 9316, Anact Converting the San Pedro Technological Institute in the City of San Pedro, Province of Laguna, as a state college and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 9317, Anact Converting the Cotobato Foundation College of Science and Technology in the Municipality of Arakan, Province of Cotobato, into a state university and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 9318, Anact Converting the Makilala Institute of Science and Technology in the Municipality of Makilala, Province of Cotobato, into a state college and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 9319, Anact Renaming the Nueva ECI University of Science and Technology as the Nueva ECI State University, expanding its mandate and curricular offerings, strengthening its governing board and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 9332, Anact Converting the Zambuanga del Sur School of Arts and Trades located in Barangay Kawit, Pagadian City, Province of Zambuanga del Sur, into a state college and appropriating funds therefore. House Bill 9334, Anact Converting the Sulu State College in the Municipality of Holoa, Province of Sulu, into a state university and appropriating funds therefore.
Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Numbers 9314, 9315, 9316, 9317, 9318, 9319, 9332, and 9334. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Acop, Adyong, Advincula, Agarao, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Assistyo, Atay de Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbys, Baronda, Barzaga, Basco, Bautista, Bautistalim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Briones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut, Bigtang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon, Ui, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagnan, Cardema, Kari, Castrofrance, Castrojean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chua, Chunggalao, Koangelika, Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Kohuangko, Jaime, Eduardo, Mar, Kohuangko, Mar, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Dagooc, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kali, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisia, Domingo, Duavit, Duhalii, DuTerte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galayos, Garcia Albert, Garcia Dante, Garcia Jose Arturo, Garcia Maria Angela, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzales Aurelio, Gonzales Neply, Gonzales Sandro, Coriseta, Giko, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Harrezco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horebata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sanie, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limcaichong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino Malapitan, Mangawang, Manigis, Manuel, Maronyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernandez, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibang, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano, Dizon, Padernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Pena, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Premisia, Sagabas, Humaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rekto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilia Bryan, Revilia Ramonjolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez Yolojo, Rodriguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romaldes Ferdinand Martin, Romaldes Sieda Marie, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sacaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson Rishel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Micah, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Theodoro, Teves, Tianco, Tien, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umalii, Unabia, Ungab, Ui, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Velozatwason, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villafuerte Luis Raymond, Villafuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villarasa Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christchantel, Yap Christofferson, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yu Lo. Udi, Vina, Grace, Uj, Jaisal, Victoria, Yulo, Zamora, Amparo, Maria, Zamora, Maria, Carmen, Zamora, Maria, Isabel, Maria, Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill numbers nine-three-one-four, nine-three-one-five, nine-three-one-six, nine-three-one-seven, nine-three-one-eight, nine-three-one-nine, nine-three-three-two, and nine-three-three-four. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Alba, Alonte, Alvarez, Pantalyon, Amatong, Angara, Umentado, Barzaga, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Biron, Bustos, Calderon, Kari, Chan, Coi, Elizaldi, Copilar, Colada, Dayanghirang, De Jesus, De Venesia, Delos Santos, Dimaporo, Muhammad, Kali, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Ian, Paul, Espares, Fernandez, Ferrer, Juliet, Marie, Fortes, Frasco, Goed, Christopher, Gonzalez, Sandro, Ginto, Gulyas, Horibata, Coi, Olga, Coi, Wilton, Lagman, Lazatin, Ligarda, Libanan, Luistro, Madrona, Marcoletta, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Nograles, Margarita, Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Ongchuan, Padearnos, Paglas, Pascual, Pimentel, Puno, Rector, Remulia, Revilia, Brian, Reyes, Rilio, Romero, Romulo, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Santos, Swansing, Horacio, Tan, Reynolds, Michael, Tan, Samir, Tan, Stephen, James, Tan, Tambut, Tan, Chai, Tan, Watko, Tupas, Umani, Unabia, Ungab, Uy, Vargas, Villia, Villa Fuerte, Luis, Raymond, Villa Fuerte, Miguel, Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villarasa, Suarez, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap, Christopherson, Yap, Eric, Zamora, Maria, Carmen.
With two hundred and nine members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill number nine-three-one-four, nine-three-one-five, nine-three-one-six, nine-three-one-seven, nine-three-one-eight, nine-three-one-nine, nine-three-three-two, and nine-three-three-four are hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the omnibus approval of all local bills pertaining to tourism, House Bill number nine-four-two-one, House Bill number nine-four-three-nine, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the said measures and therefore after call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of House Bill nine-four-two-one, nine-four-three-nine, and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill number nine-four-two-one, an act declaring the municipality of Capalonga, province of Camarinis Norte, a tourism development area. House Bill number nine-four-three-nine, an act declaring the shrine of the Battle of Kakarong desile located in Barangay, Real de Kakarong, municipality of Pandi, province of Bulakan, a tourism site. Roll call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill numbers nine-four-two-one and nine-four-three-nine. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Charon, Asidre, Akop, Adyong, Advincula, Agaraw, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez, Jose, Alvarez, Mercedes, Alvarez, Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino, Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogancia, Assistyo, Atayde, Umentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbas, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskuk, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Bernos, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut, Big Tang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon, Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro, Franz, Castro, Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Chuachong, Galauco, Angelica, Natasha, Coi, Elizaldi, Copilar, Kohuangco, Jaime, Eduardo, Mark, Kohuangco, Mark, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz, Ambrosio, Cruz, Ricardo, Kuak, Quaresma, Tagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus, De Venesia. Defensor, Del Mar, Delos Santos, Dimaporo, Muhammad, Kali, Dimaporo, Siti, Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino, Ino, Di Faustino, Michael, Carlos, Di Ian, Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farinas, Fernandez, Ferrer, Antonio, Ferrer, Juliet, Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuentebelia, Galayos, Garcia, Albert, Garcia, Dante, Garcia, Jose, Arturo, Garcia, Maria, Angela, Garcia, Pablo, John, Garcia, Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Goed, Christopher, Go, Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez, Aurelio, Gonzalez, Neptali, Gonzalez, Sandro, Curiseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Harrezco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Coi, Olga, Coi, Ricardo, Coi, Wilton, Kung Hun, Labad, Labad, Laxon, Laxon, Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Daphne, Lagon, Sani, Lara, Lazatin, Liligard, Dalibanan, Limcaychong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayag, Makapagal, Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magcino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manigis, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoletta, Marcos, Mariano, Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado, Revilia, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Navan, Nisay, Nograles, Juan, Fidel, Felipe, Nograles, Margarita, Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongchuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano, Dison, Padearnos, Paduana, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Pena, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Premisa, Sagabas, Pumaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rector, Rehencia, Remulia, Revilia, Brian, Revilia, Ramon, Jolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Yolo, Rodriguez, Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes, Ferdinand, Martin, Romualdes, Siada, Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roques, Akdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulog, Silverio, Singson, Rachel, Singson, Ronald, Singson, Mihang, Solon, Suwan, Swansing, Horacio, Swansing, Michaela, Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan, Joseph, Tan, Keith, Maika, Tan, Reynolds, Michael, Tan, Samir, Tan, Stephen, James, Tan, Tambut, Tan, Chai, Tan, Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Teves, Tiyango, Tiyang, Tolentino, Tulfo, Irwin, Tulfo, Joseline, Tulfo, Ralph, Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umani, Unabia, Ungab, Uy, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas, Alfonso, Velasco, Velozotuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villa Fuerte, Luis, Raymond, Villa Fuerte, Miguel, Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villarasa, Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap, Cristiante, Yap, Christopherson, Yap, Edvick, Yap, Eric, Udi, Vina, Grace, Uj, Jaisal, Victoria, Yulo, Zamora, Amparo, Maria, Zamora, Maria, Carmen, Zamora, Isabel, Maria, Zubiri. Second call of members in consideration on third reading of House Bill numbers nine-four-two-one and nine-four-three-nine. Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Alba, Alonte, Alvarez, Pantalyon, Amatong, Angara, Umentado, Barzaga, Bautista, Bautista Lim, Benitez, Biron, Bustos, Calderon, Kari, Chan, Coi, Elizaldi, Copilar, Colada, Dayanghirang, De Jesus, De Venesia, Delos Santos, Dimaporo, Muhammad, Kali, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Ian, Paul, Espares, Fernandez, Ferrer, Juliet, Marie, Fortes, Frasco, Goed, Christopher, Gonzalez, Sandro, Ginto, Gulyas, Horibata, Coi, Olga, Ara, Coi, Wilton, Lagman, Lazatin, Ligarda, Libanan, Luistro, Madrona, Marcoletta, Marquez, Martinez, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Nograles, Margarita, Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Ongchuan, Padearnos, Paglas, Pascual, Pimentel, Puno, Rector, Remulia, Revilia, Brian, Reyes, Rilio, Roman, Romero, Romulo, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Santos, Swansing, Horacio, Tan, Reynolds, Michael, Tan, Samir, Tan, Stephen, James, Tan, Tambut, Tan, Chai, Tan, Watko, Tupas, Umani, Unabia, Ungab, Uy, Vargas, Villia, Villa Fuerte, Luis, Raymond, Villa Fuerte, Miguel, Luis, Villanueva, Villiar, Villarasa, Suarez, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap, Christopherson, Yap, Eric, Zamora, Maria, Carmen.
With two hundred and nine members voting in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, House Bill numbers nine-four-two-one and nine-four-three-nine are hereby approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we transmit to the Senate all bills approved on third reading.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we proceed, may I request that we acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Congresswoman of the Second District of Marquina City, the Honorable Congresswoman Stella Luz Kimbo. They are the newly elected barangay officials of Marquina City. From Barangay Baranka, the barangay kagawads and SK officials, from Barangay Concepcion Uno, Captain Gerardo Santo Domingo and SK Chairman Ariel Yuri Edullian, from Barangay Concepcion Dos, Captain Mary Jane Zubiri de la Rosa and SK Chairman Louis Marie Lampa, from Barangay Fortune, Captain Rafael Tiope, SK Chairman Seddy Balagasi and former Captain Resalina Watson Tiope, from Barangay Industrial Valley, the barangay kagawads, from Barangay Jesus de la Pena, their barangay kagawads, from Barangay Malandai, their barangay kagawads, from Barangay Marquina Heights, their barangay kagawads, from Barangay Nanga, Captain Celso de las Armadas and SK Chairman John Carl Leal, from Barangay Parang, Captain Ronald Zulweta and their SK officials, from Barangay San Roque, Captain Tadeo Alan M. Aramil and their SK officials, from Barangay Tanyong, Captain Danilo C. del Castillo and their SK officials, and finally from Barangay Tumana, former Captain Zifred Ancheta, their barangay of kagawads, SK Chairman Carl Giadrian Ancheta and their SK officials.
To the guest of Honorable Stella Luz Kimbo, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House resolutions to the appropriate committees. House Resolution Number one-four-three-seven to the Committee on Ways and Means, House Resolution Number one-four-three-eight to the Committee on Trade and Industry, House Resolution one-four-four-three to the Committee on Transportation, House Resolution one-four-six-six to the Committee on Natural Resources, and House Resolution one-four-six-seven to the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The aforementioned House resolutions are referred to the aforementioned committees. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, pursuant to our rules governing inquiries in aid of legislation, I move to refer the following speeches to the appropriate committees. The speech of the Honorable Representative Asidre to the Committee on Disaster Resilience, the speech of the Honorable Representative Hataman to the Committee on Foreign Affairs, the speech of the Honorable Representative Horasos Wansing to the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms, the speech of the Honorable Representative Mangawang to the Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples, the speech of the Honorable Representative Brosas to the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources, the speech of the Honorable Representative Albert Gersia to the Committee on Metro Manila Development, and the speech of the Honorable Representative Franz Castro to the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The aforementioned speeches are referred to the aforementioned committees. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill Numbers one-fa- one... My apologies, Mr. Speaker. House Bill Numbers five-three-six-three and eight-nine-five-five from the Committee on Local Government to the Committee on Revision of Laws, and House Bill Number eight-nine-one-two from the Committee on Appropriations to the Committee on Revision of Laws.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we elect the following members to the following committees: to the Committee on Agriculture and Food as member, Uy Roberto Junior; to the Committee on Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources as Vice Chairperson, Uy Roberto Junior; to the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability as Vice Chairperson, Uy Roberto Junior; to the Committee on Government, Enterprise, and Privatization as member, Uy Roberto Junior; to the Committee on Mindanao Affairs as member, Uy Roberto Junior; and to the Special Committee on West Philippine Sea as Vice Chairperson, Arnan Panaligan. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The session is adjourned until November, Tuesday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three at three p.m.